Welcome to the June 7, 2022 budget hearing. The floor is open for any public comment regarding the budget.
What letter did she have? What letter, Michael? Yeah, they're all letter coded.
So, so did they?
They're speaking in Latin.
Were you able to hear what she said?
Yeah.
Because she wasn't talking to the microphone. Do you want to do it again and talk into the microphone?
Hearing no questions, the budget hearing is adjourned.
I'm here, I'm on. Let me come to now. Please welcome to the Navarre School District, June 7th school board meeting this evening.
From the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, in the law, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Miller. Miller. Trustee Saunders. Trustee White. Trustee Patterson. Trustee Mitchell. Trustee Turnquist. Trustee Redd. Trustee Saunders. First, we've got a new tenure official to recognize.
Good evening, and welcome to the 2022 school year tenure awards recognition. I'm Marcy Kidd, I'm superintendent for the Office of Human Resources. Along with me, I have Madam President, Trustee Saunders, and Acting Superintendent, so to be Superintendent, Dr. Wade. At the Office of Human Resources, this is the best time of the year that we are here. Next up, hiring people or maybe ahead of hiring. At this time, I'm going to ask each principal to come down and to their schools, um, to schools in alphabetical order. Is Dr. Yucu here? The first person we're recognizing this evening is Mr. Robert I. Rayne for the tenure in the area of music. Columbus, Dr. Crawford. Carrie Pope. Denzel Washington, we are recognizing Ms. Latania Beaters in the area of Department Administrator Sting. Stacy Davio. And then we'll welcome Christina Fitzmars. Raven Keys. Julio Varej. Dr. Hansom Breger, Ray School. Ria Calucci. Helen Friette. Troy Cornwall, physical evidence. Brad Remino. Alfredo Llana. Ms. Premilius Ryan School. Ms. Dixon Parker. Miranda Dorian. Joseph Ferretti. Ashley Tumso. Ms. Makaya Na. Courtney Ramsey. Pato Sando. Ms. Marcelina Penney School. Ms. Veronica Zerro Turner. Linda Fortuna. Lorena King. Jennifer Cuero. Lema Salagar Riva. Montu Obedina Frigfansi. Ms. Sabatino, thank you, school. Mr. Frederick Con. Devine Kennedy Finney. Ms. Ara Corco. Mr. Don Reynolds. Ms. Free Carrie. Melissa Benfinn. Ms. Ina. Gracie Ricker. See my cabbies. Mary Beth. Anne Smith. Summer High School. Robert Garverano. Katie Warren. Michelle LaRide. Harper School. That's great, move. Jean-Luc Farida. Stephanie Toronto. Annie T. Thor. Jacqueline Green. Stephanie Harris. Cordette Julianne Comp. Cindy Lumpont Tom. Carson Maliswau. Brenda Mills Heinz. Dana Murray. Alexis Fantabita. Gina Rickenakis. Carl Winslow III. Are you willing to sit in studio? Cracking. Tanee Morgan. Robin Rapilo. Shannon Shields. Maple Tavari. William Thor. Thank you. Amy. Monica D Oliver. Robert Isakian. Kristen Tawalas. Lisa Knrath. Adrian Tobar. Dr. Gail White Walker. So, congratulations to all who've been tenured and recognized on this evening. There are refreshments in the best field.
The Board of Education, if she's here.
The Mount Vernon Board of Education recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children. And accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of board policy. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting, by contact with the district or in person, by phone, or by email. The board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, or other Mount Vernon education official or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker's allotted three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first public speaker tonight is Quayle Bogan Park.
Good evening. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to dispute the fact that we cannot mention names of elected officials. I will hold to that tonight, but throughout this nation, if you're elected, you can be named and criticized. One of the most egregious events I've ever heard of is what happened to the principal Denzel Washington. It is well-known in the community that two board members, parent, employees, and students conspired to set up and destroy the reputation of the principal. What is more shocking is that there was a sham What is more shocking is that there was a sham investigation. The principal was damaged, and several were the students. People need to be held accountable and charged before taxpayers end up paying for the damage. We as a community must rise up to this terrible injustice. CNN, are you listening? Me too, we argue. Some board members bullied other board members, administrators also. A candidate was attacked by a board member in a district building for crime, winning the election. During the election, a board member attacked my family, which is I believe. In a January six-type move, a board member decided not to certify the election. I never saw the will of the people ignored in a schoolborn election. Voting has caused chaos in this district. The state must investigate and punish any board member who feels it is okay to attack anyone. Data from the business office shows. The total number of students budgeted in 2021-22 was 7,850. The total enrollment is 6,931, plus 420 for charter schools. This leaves 499 students who are unaccounted for. Where are these students? For months, the business office could not explain the discrepancy, but now it makes the numbers wrong and unjustly downward. Why? At $36,000 per student, that is an $18 million boost. Tax dollars are spent on 499 of these students. 120 students are budgeted for next year's charter school. However, the budgeted, the projected budget of the district enrollment did not go down. How is that possible? If we all came for 120 Malburned students to attend the charter school, 120 students should be taken off the projected. 120 students should be taken off the projected district enrollment. How come? It wasn't. Until the business office was called, the tax rate would have felt paid up. That's not a question. There are real consequences. Our community members are being foreclosed in record numbers, and there is real pain out there. I support the new superintendent belief that she won't make the necessary changes to this troubling district. Many changes are needed.
Our next speaker is Warner Gerwin.
Good evening, board trustees, superintendent, and community. My name is Warner Gerwin. I would like to let the community know the way I was treated when I was selected as schoolborn trustee on May 17th by one of the board members that's currently here. I was attacked. I was threatened, calling names with all the F-bombs by one, by this trustee. Two security guards, along with another trustee, and apparent liaison, had to peel back this trustee from my face as she called, called the F-bomb, say all the F-bomb, I mean F-bomb in about 10 F-bombs in about a second. Now, I wasn't, my, my, my seat wasn't appointed. I was selected by the community. And it's very discouraging to see that a board member who is the face of the district acted that way. Now, I sent, I spent my time, and I sent email to all the board members advising them of this board member action. And only one person that was present that acknowledged my email. No one responded, nor did this board member apologize to me. Now, we are changing, or we want to change, the culture in the district. My question is to the board members, with that kind of behavior, do you have a code of conduct in place? And what is the consequences for board members to act that way? Now, if administrator or teacher acts that way, they are pulled from their office or from the classroom. And if a student acts that way, they are pulled from the school. So is the board members above the code of conduct or above the principles that goes on in the district? I would really like to know because this is not, and this is not appreciated, nor was it provoked. I did not provoke this individual. The last time I spoke to this individual was when I encouraged my neighbors to come out and vote for her when it did for election. I never spoke to this individual ever before she ran for election. So again, I would like to know, by all the board members, anyone, let me know if you have an active code of conduct and what are the consequences for any board members to act out of character towards anybody else to the matter of fact? Thank you. I promise you that this talk will, so, I'm sorry, I hope you'll continue to, to handle the voting, but your trustee, the principal, the senior general, so what about that? So does board member, do you have an active code of conduct or does a board member help to that level or they do not have to, are they act on, 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 on any discipline in code? Oh, there is? Oh, man. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Wendy Harmer.
Well, I will keep you started. The timer goes off five, four, three minutes, and then another minute. Um, I just, I know that there's some children waiting to read their poems. Is that, I know it's difficult to change the order of things, but I, I'm wondering if it's possible for me to save my comments so that the kids get a chance to read their poems, or am I waiting for other colored ones too? I'll do that because I know I can't even read them.
So we've got to change the order. We don't want the kids to see, how many, see, how many kids are sleeping. That's why we're just gonna change it.
Take five.
Is that okay?
Take five.
We need everyone. This evening, we have eight students from the Trappagan School who is going to the South Eastern Shore. This was supposed to be the beginning of my report because I like to begin with students, but because they're small, anyone who gets over to their board, we are going to be changing order. So Mrs. Kenyonis will explain to you what this is all about. Please cue me.
Thank you very much, Karen Kenyonis. Good evening, everyone. I'm Carol Kenyonis. I'm the proud principal of Trappagan School. This is the year our teachers worked very hard on writing. We had a strong focus on writing, and we did a school-wide poetry study. What you will hear tonight are poets, a small sampling of our poets at Trappagan School. What we do know about writing is that it gives power to our voice. And what we know about poetry, it gives power to our heart. Enjoy our poets this evening. Mila DeRusso, 31.
Mila smiles a lot, loves everybody, laughs, tells a funny story. Sister Adley and Jackson love her fashion reading, Leno, Family and Ava, who feels happy about a lot of things. So when she goes to sushi and grins when she gets wet, who needs to get less eye bags to be at the Indian's, who gives lots of hugs to everybody, hope and flowers, who gives eyes, pounds, my mom's a lawyer and a car.
Ada Neos, grade 2.
Beach Shell. The calm sound of water, waves crashing at the shore. Sitting in the shade, the soft rustle of palm trees against the gentle breeze, lounging against the water sand. Bright summer light shining down, filling the water with warmth. Happy to be here on this day.
Where I'm from, I'm from the trees and the forest. I'm from a wind with a scent of banana cookies flying in the air. I'm from the island of Saint Thomas, where you can smell Johnny Cake in the wind. I'm from my soul, where my body rests in peace, where I can breathe and tell myself stuff. I'm from Ireland, where there are windy skies. You can see the sun shining on me as I dance and feel the wind chime to knock me down.
Natalie DeRusso, grade 3.
I am from, I'm from a tears, I'm from a beautiful people. I'm from my heart, I'm from my independence and freedom. I'm from my friends, I'm from the universe. I'm from my teachers, I'm from my arts, and most of all, I am me.
Ashley Huna, grade 4.
The breeze. This breeze is like the sky calling my name, like the breeze was guiding me toward me to life. It shows me to my home, where I can sit outside and relax. I love the amazing breeze, I wish it would come back. If it ever comes back, I will be very glad. I hate it when it goes away, it makes me very sad. I hope this breeze will spread across the world.
Avery Raceless.
She is the steel chain that keeps my family together. She is the great taste of chocolate. She is the seasoning for every nice breeze. She is the food that provides me with life. She is the broom that sweeps away all my troubles. She is the formula for everything. She is the calls I'm typing. She is the show on TV that brings me entertainment. She is the cool summer breeze. She is the key to my life. She is my mother.
Robert Jackson, grade 8.
The waters pound. Water is the flow of water, like a flower that blooms in the dark. It flows throughout yourself, waving to the ocean as tall as the millions, spanning almost throughout the entire earth. In it is within yourself, like water rushing against a rock. But through and through, life grows and sprouts, bigger until things cannot anymore. It is finished, done, it has seen the world. Its time is near, its hour is coming, and then comes the beyond.
Isaac Omero, grade 7.
My soul responds because God's love is everlasting, forever and ever. Writing right for express myself, wanting to make a break and have another one. People say to me, "They won't know the wrong way." Writing right for express something, but I want to change my ways, hate the same routine, but want to be happy and joyful, painting too. Too many haters, they are just evil.
Thank you, boys. We are so proud of you. Thank you, Miss Whitehead, and all the members and all the students. Thank you.
Thank you so much, especially for your flexibility. I know it's hard to work, to have an agenda to cover, but I was worried about, I'm a mom, so I was worried about.
I remember.
That's hard, so thank you. First of all, good evening. Thank you so much for your time and your energy and all you give to this school district. My name is Wendy Harmer, and I am here as both a parent of two students at the Trappagan School and also as the PTA president of the Trappagan School. For several years, there have been complaints about the lack of proper ventilation and air conditioning in Trappagan. I know you have dozens of demands on your time and a presence for attention, but this is an issue that has been pushed to the bottom of the pile over and over and over again. This is, in fact, the fourth year I have purchased fans and extension cords for various classrooms in the school. This is the fourth year in a row that I have requested for someone to address this problem seriously. We have been told that, quote, "The issue of Trappagan AC is not so easily solved." Of course, it isn't easily solved. That's why you are here. If it were easily solved, we wouldn't be here. If it were easily solved, I would have done it myself, as a one-woman mom, I reckon, if I had to. No one voted for you to be a schoolborn trustee so that you could solve the easy problems. If it were an issue for school, the principal, the PTA, or I could have solved, we would have. We have been promised repeatedly over the years that either there would be a, a permanent solution in the next budget, or B, a temporary fix. Two years ago, the facilities department gave a presentation at a public meeting much like this, specifically promising to fix the Trappagan AC in the next year's budget. Two years have passed, and nothing has changed. There has definitely not been a permanent solution, nor even a cursory attempt to date a temporary fix. Instead, each year, students, staff, teachers, and parents are told to suffer through the heat until the end of the school year, when they are then outsourced to a different school, not a general neighborhood, for the summer. Was anyone have the impression that the lack of proper ventilation or AC is a luxury problem? And I recognize this is not just a Trappagan problem. And I recognize this is not just a trap Hagan problem. Let me assure you, it is not. When my child was born, he was diagnosed with pediatric hypertension. This is a very serious disorder, and it is made not forced by extreme heat. He can go into shock and even have stroke. On many occasions in the last four years, my child and many others have been sent home early from school for symptoms of heat stroke. We have an amazing, kind, and generous owners of Trap Hagan, and what she consistently asks of me is that the PTA provide possibles to her so she can keep them in her office for the students who come in almost daily overheated. On the second floor, east-facing rooms, the temperature regularly reaches well over ninety degrees. These rooms have nearly floor-to-ceiling windows with unobstructed sunlight coming in. Because of their outdated type of windows, there are no screens. So teachers have the option to open windows and worry about the safety of children or leave the window shut and suffer the consequences. But even the unsafe open windows are by the way to never leave. On the ground floor, the windows are large enough and low enough, remember, we have no screens, for an adult to crawl through with very little effort. This is a massive security issue, aside from the problem of air. So teachers opening the windows on higher floors is a security and safety hazard and doesn't help the outcome. Please, please honor the promises made years past and fix the air at Trap Hagan. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Suhai Brown. Nigel Burgess.
Good evening, everybody. I'm the community board member of Nigel, I'm a parent of the community, and I am the president of NMHP School, PTSA. I came today, I first I was put on the list today to speak about the security issue in terms of the crossing guard issue at our school. We didn't have a crossing guard. And this is something that we have been going back and forth with the police department and the school district for some time, before Dr. Benny Conroy came. So when I spoke last week, the last meeting, Dr. Benny Conroy let us know that she had been in conversation with the mayor and the police department and that there would be a crossing guard, and we did have a crossing guard. However, she has been in contact with the PTSA as well as some of the other leaders in the school. So thank you very much, and today we got a crossing guard. So thank you. We come back to the diversity area, and here we are. The PTA is here to support what NMHP needs. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jonathan DeRusso.
Good evening, madam, acting superintendent, soon to be superintendent, trustees, families, PTA members, presidents, principals, and all those that are honored tonight, our teachers, because our teachers teach our children, which is so important. I'm the parent of three of our Trap Hagan students that are there. And as Wendy spoke about, one of the things that Wendy spoke about was the air conditioning. And I support everything she said on that. You know, it's something that is just, you know, very uncomfortable. There I go on a volunteer, I feel the heat, and as the summer months are coming, you know, it's been very difficult for our children to be here. Also, what you mentioned was security, okay? With the growing trend of these calories that attack our children, I think that our security is only as good as everybody in the school. A child sometimes will not pay attention to the fact that they see an adult at the door, they might open it. Something like cameras or some kind of technology needs to be in place to see what's going on. Our security staff does the best they can, but they can't be at every door all the time. Our teachers can't open the ground floor windows, because like you said, they're antiquated and you could walk right in, you could literally walk right into a plant through those kind of windows. We do have to consider some other options as these growing attacks on our students continue to take place. You know, it's not a matter of if it happens, more like when it happens. You know, every time you turn around, this is something that's going to happen. So that is one of the issues that I really want our board to take seriously about children. I don't do take it seriously, but we have to consider some other options to keep our children safe, and our staff, and our teachers. You know, this is something, even our security can go overwhelmed by a person who's got, you know, once they're in the school, that's the problem. You know, so we have to make sure we're not letting them in and that we can see people, like boys that are not men twenty-four, you know, all the time. Another issue I wanted to bring up is we have no crosswalks to get our children from one side of Columbus to the trap Hagan side. Ms. Highland has been very good at trying to get the city to put in crosswalks. There's no, you know, we painted crosswalk. But I also said that we should have a sign that says "Stop the children" or "Stop pedestrians" in the crosswalk. The people that turn off a pussy onto Elwood, that new term is so dangerous. Because there's no crosswalk, people just fly through. And I live on Hudson, so I see it every day. On the other side, the next crossing is of Brand Avenue coming across as well. We have no crosswalks. Even the high school students coming from, not running high school, have no place to cross. You know, and because you have a cross county, you have Brand Avenue, and people just must be such a rush to get through Cross County that they drive like maniacs. They don't pay attention to any kind of speed limits. So that's another concern that we have, and we definitely need those crosswalks as soon as possible. So if the city could look at the ones and say, you know, "Stop pedestrians," it would be very, very helpful. And like I said, the air conditioning is definitely, you know, a priority to be able to help with that. All right, that's all that happened there. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bishop Nathan Edwards.
Now, President, I would like to defer, if I can, to the newly president of the United African speaking before I do. I'm just the chairperson of Education Committee, but he's the actual boss now. So I'd like to defer to him, and then I will come back and make my comments.
Good evening, everyone. I am Stephen Vogel, pastor of Greater Centennial, and president of the National Black Turkey. I stand today because this nation is at a crisis. Everywhere you look, there are crises. Most of the crises are not unique to a particular town or a particular city. But I'm afraid that we have a crisis that's unique to us, and that is behavioral leadership. It becomes so important that we as leaders model the behavior that we want to see everyone follow. It's so important that our elected officials model the behavior that those that elected them expected them to have. And so it concerns me greatly that we have trustees who are not behaving properly. Then we have an expectation that students are going to behave right. We have an expectation that what we elected you to do is to make sure that we have proper behavior, not just in classrooms and not just in leadership in school, but leadership on this board. That that's what we elected you to do, and we have some expectations. If there is a code of conduct, I want to suggest that that code of conduct be printed and publicized on the website so everyone can see what that code of conduct is. In addition to that, to make sure that there's a real fight to the code of conduct. That if somebody breaks that code of conduct, the same people who elected him should be accountable if they break that code of conduct. I want to suggest that this board, this board of trustees, that you create if you don't have a code of conduct. And if you do, refute, refute with the community partners, United Black Turkey and others, so that we can have a real code of conduct, that everyone who runs on the school board will understand what that code of conduct is and what we, the those who elect them, expect from them. This is basic, this is middle. We should never have to worry about our trustees not behaving properly. We should never have to worry about trustees cursing out trustees. We should never have to worry about inviting, because inviting becomes a problem because now we can't do what we've elected you to do, and that is to run our schools and make sure that we have excellent education in the city of North Carolina. There is absolutely no reason why our students cannot have excellent education. We can't expect it at the principal level, we can't expect it in the classroom, if we don't expect it from you. And so we have to do this. I'm a proud parent of two, soon to be two, Melbourne graduates, both from the South in college in Atlanta, because they received excellent education. And so we want to make sure that this continues. We should have to hear about these inviting and trustees coming after one another in those spaces. That is totally unacceptable. So I want, because many times when we stand up here and we speak, well, we have to have a call to action. Our call to action is to create or make public the code of conduct. And if there are some places in that code of conduct that needs changes, so that action can be taken either by the board of trustees or the people who elect the trustees, that needs to happen, because if you elect somebody and they break that code and they know that the community is going to open to that code, they won't act that way. So I implore you, I beg you, please, let us see the code of conduct, or let's read one together.
Give you some trustees a history lesson. I've been here thirty-three years. We used to have board meetings where trustees did not behave at all, and ultimately, the children in education suffered in our burden. We're not going back to those days. That's why our test scores went down, and we got rid of those persons who would not act civil, act like adults in the room, in the room and outside the room. It is ridiculous for any trustee to take their work so personal that they launch out on anybody else. And then also, I want to say this, it is also ridiculous that we hear that trustees are interfering in investigations of principals and creating, creating outcomes to outsource a principal. And then once the investigation shows that the principal or the person is not guilty of the allegation, nobody comes up and say, "We may never stay," or "Hold up to it." The community is upon our arms to know that there were trustees who created, who created this climate of suspicion and false allegation that needs to be dealt with. And finally, a positive note, I may not have the opportunity on July first to congratulate you, Dr. Benny Conroy. We love you for, you have been here forever. Already she has made an impact in a community that's underserved and at greatest balance. She is now launching the three-year-old university pre-K program that she wants to bring back to the community. I don't know why in the world that this board has embraced something like that when most of our children already start at a disadvantage. And they have two parents that's working, and they end up in people homes have the potential of being molested and abused. And now they can come into a safe climate, a place that is children-friendly and begin their education. It makes sense that we invest our money in university pre-K, not just looking for grants, but take some of that money that you have wasted on some projects and things that have not yielded nothing, and put that money in children, and you will see the return. Thank you. All hail. Thank you.
Jackie Monroe.
Good evening, community. Good evening, trustees. Perhaps the whole, having still hold my thunder man. Actually, what I gotta say is it's a blessing to actually have this leadership and this fellowship before me, because I quite frankly have made notes to say exactly what this elder just said. I want to speak frankly in solidarity with my fellow community member, Mr. Blunt Carter, because brother Gregory made the case that frankly, you know, trustee behavior on trustee behavior, we're grown adults and we know what's right and wrong. But for me, the most egregious part of this situation that sounds like an allegation, I'll declare, is that it sounds like there's some implication on the behavior of a student taking part in this. This, to me, is the most egregious breach of principle, because my earliest years as an organizer was as a student. And I remember the care our leadership used to take to protect us emotionally, emotionally, socially, even physically, from the potential ramifications of political activity. And that, and that's what, that's what we were in the right. So I can't believe that a student might have been implicated in any action that had to do with the targeting of this though for any political or any professional reason. Having said that, I believe it's not even radical, frankly, I know it's not radical. You know, I have to frankly keep this in mind, because it's not a new idea that we protect our children. It's not a new, it's not a new demand, and it might sound radically 2022. But protecting our children is not something you should have to do for votes or for money. You shouldn't have to do it because it looks good. It should be, it should be done because it's as essential as eating and breathing, you know? The funeral for young Caleb Green was opened with this statement. And I'm not any seminarian, but this statement was actually quoted and I recall, because it's important, because it's an old idea, the New American Version of Matthew eighteen verse six. The New American Version says, "But whoever causes one of these little ones who believe he is dead, it is fair for him that a heavy millstone will hung around his neck, and that he be drowned in the depths of the sea." Can you imagine how serious you have to be that the egregious breach of a child's safety, that a community would want to drown you in the ocean? That is an old idea. Do not let this happen. Not this actual recourse, but don't let this kind of community recourse be called upon you, trustees. Do not forget your obligation to our children. This, to me, is really the most, is the worst kind of violation, because apart from the political ramifications and all the other, whatever it took us to get to this place, it seems like it takes the focus off systemic solutions, the problems that are seriously deeply and irredeemably deep, dire straits in our, in every community, every black community in this racist colonial country is in very dire need, has been since before COVID. Now it's four times worse. Economists, economists were saying it's gonna be worse now, as this inflation, upcoming recessions, no depressions are gonna make our children and our families even greater, in a greater sense of suffering. So I want you to consider that systemic solutions in part are yours. You have to prepare our children socially, emotionally, and educationally intellectually, for this world is coming at them at a hundred miles an hour. Things, basic things, slammed up things, like I said, like an African-centered education. Why would we have to make a demand for that for a decade now as it happened? Why does it have to be so? Okay, I'm warming up, I'm warming up, but I'm cooling down. So I'm, you know, I'm closing up really to the fact that we need, we need a vision. You need to do some of the easy things that you need, you know? Let's have an educational curriculum. You know, one of our most preeminent scholars in this, in this community, Dr. Larry School, gave a presentation last Wednesday on the African-American civil rights, or the central, central focus and contribution of Melbourne to the civil rights community, was made last week at City Hall. I can't really, well, I haven't finished watching it. I can't really, well, I finished watching the whole video, but it was poorly promoted. I can't believe that, because in the media age, why is not Mount Vernon's media center not trained? You don't have a television production program anymore, from what I understand. Why don't we have a production program that should be loaded and recorded and streamed that production? Why is that actual program hand in glove promoted with Mount Vernon IHOP, with Mount Vernon City School District? So, why are these easy things not being done? But we're hearing about bakering of adults? Come on, we gotta do better, thank you.
Good evening, trustees, good evening, community. I am here tonight, I have three hats that I wear. I am Karen the Trapeian, I am a pledge holder Trapeian, and I am also the treasurer at the PTA Trapeian. I am here tonight for many reasons, but my number one reason is for security purposes. I witness every single day that I am out on that field with those children, cars coming in from all different entrances, all different exits, flying through the property. We have regular pedestrians, we have official vehicles, we have DPW vehicles, sanitation, everybody you can think of flying through the property. I would like to thank Mr. Ken Silver, he already reached out to me today to speak to me about what I thought would be a proper solution. The proper solution that I came up with was speed bumps. I can tell you, there's been numerous times where the children at three o'clock have almost gotten hit by garbage trucks. I witnessed it today. I'm not sure which company it is pulled into our property at three o'clock, and just kind of waiting for the kids to get out of the way, but that's not the time that sanitation should be on our property. And I understand that things happen, but in your head, you should say, okay, it's three o'clock, there are children out, let's not go there right now. The other thing, and I know we've probably heard a lot about this, is the air conditioning. And I am not gonna waste any time speaking about it. Ms. Wendy Harper did a wonderful job speaking for Trapeian about it, and I know we've gotten numerous people about it. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Tom's College of Cassidy and the Boys. On the budget proposal next year, we revote in about two weeks. Each student is cost thirty-six thousand two hundred, two sixty-six divided by seventy-three fifty-one. This is more than White Plains, New Rochelle, and Yonkers, three comparable city school districts. Also, each justice thirty thousand per student, ninety-six million dollar budget for thirty-two hundred students. In addition, we have serious infrastructure problems. I'm a member of the budget committee, a member of the public, as a district powers, and Rick has done a lot of work on this, and we've got to cut some infrastructure overhead. And I thought, in looking at the students per school, I got the complaint that many of these schools are overcrowded. But when you look at the numbers, Benjamin Turner has two hundred, it's like a small middle school. I think we ought to take a serious look at closing one of the schools, one of the oldest ones. That'd be Williams, or Hamilton, or, you know, one of those. And we've got to look at these change orders. We get a bid, one, two, three, the lowest bid, they stop the project, oh, it's gonna be an overrun, we gotta come back for a change order, doesn't go out the bid again. We need a forensic audit, and not O'Connor, West Davies, or Ringer, or Topen, whoever it is. A third party that we've never used before, that's gonna take an independent look at this. No more paving sidewalks in Pennington that don't need to be paved. And I guess we have a new facilities director, I haven't met the person yet. But I hope he's not being paid overtime like the previous one, he's management. Another thing, our new treasurer, I understand, has been tabled. I found out he's a compact team, but no trustees on the compact team. This is the person that we're gonna sign a contract with, presumably, it's not an actual employee. I think, I think at least one trustee, probably the head of the budget committee, Melissa, should run on that committee. About five years ago, maybe it's three, four, five, I asked how many employees the district had. And the former human resource person, Kropeski, this is Kropeski, said, "Well, the software that we used in the past doesn't nutcase over the software that we have now," and blah, 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 she couldn't give me a number. And that time, I had called Yonkers, I run their website, Yonkers White Plains and New Rochelle. And they have six, seven, eight students per employee. We will, we will, like, four or five, four or five students per employee. Going forward, we have to find, gone on the number of pupils for the best number in October, we have to find out how many permanent full-time employees we have. So, and you know, we get an audit statement in October or so. Every employee should read that audit statement so they can ask intelligent questions about the budget, about spending. I know a lot of people don't have a finance background, but you know, that's what we're obligated to, to be a trustee, you know, it's how we spend our money. Oh, another thing on holidays. In the past, we have Judeo-Christian holidays. Fine, I come from Boston, we didn't have Jewish holidays off, but every Jewish teacher was a student, and there were a significant number in my school that went to Boston Latin. They weren't penalized with their income, they weren't dogged and paid, and it was kind of like a two-day vacation for us, the rest of us. Now, we've got a Muslim holiday, is Chinese, Lupita gonna be next? Buddhism, Confucianism from Japan? This is getting out of control.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, I'm going to continue in the name of celebration of our kids, and in the name of the celebration of our parents and teachers and staff. I will start, I will cut my group work short, there's an age of time. But I want, there are some students here who want to acknowledge. We have two students, Ronald Adam and Laura Fellers, who are part of our two new members who were adopted with the MBK in Orleans. And they are here tonight to receive this certificate and their pins. One could make it, but the other one, one, is she here? She come, right. And she's so proud of her son, that a son could make it, so said she's here to accept the award that we have of her son. Tonight, I have here this Dr. Gabby Tannen, the second editor, who is the new MBK leader. you have to be the chief of all and everything, Mohammed is sitting in the picture, but I think Brother Mohammed is more the high schooler, and he's working on this driving project. So, this is the editor, it's over. So, I want to our mom, because she's so proud of her son. So, on behalf of the board of trustees, myself, and the cabinet, and Mount Vernon City School District, I'm going to give you this certificate and this pin. I am so proud of you, so here I present you with the certificate. What's we're not here today, so I'm going to give it to Mrs. the editor.
So, I just wanted to say one thing about Eamon Adam. The reason he's not here is because he's representing the City of Mount Vernon in the national status for the Trapeian. You know, our students work a lot, and they excel, and these two young men have done many hardship, and they are quite representing the City of Mount Vernon.
The next speaker is Nicolele Zaputo. Nicolele is from, and Nicolele has earned for herself a scholarship. And the scholarship is from the Council of School Superior Day. And she has received a check for four thousand dollars. And we want to thank the City of Mount Vernon, we want to thank this school district. We want to say congratulations, and I'll be cool to hear from you after college. Now, as we proceed, we have tonight Dr. Jamal Dagen. He can and he has a program in his school that's called No Place For Hate. And because we have been hearing about the bullying that is taking place all over, I decided that I am going to institute it in our schools. So, if you want I do that, I'm going to ask him to come to podium and present No Place For Hate.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. B C said, I was in here, because he was feeling Okay, good evening, everyone. Like Dr. B C said, I've been implementing this program in my building for about six years now. It's an anti-bias, anti-bullying campaign initiative. We've been using it for six years, and it also changed the climate and culture in our buildings, although we're presenting this, and like Dr. B C said, she was interested in it. Therefore, she's been reporting it, so we're presenting it right now. So, the program is called No Place For Hate, if you could look it on the screen. So, what is No Place For Hate? No Place For Hate is an initiative of the Anti-Defamation League offered to pre-K in twelve schools. The Anti-Information League is a leading anti-hate organization founded in nineteen thirteen in response to antisemitism and bigotry. Today, the MTL continues to fight all forms of hate and bullying. Now, this framework is designed to rally the entire school around a goal of creating a welcoming community committed to stopping all forms of bias and bullying. Upon completion of the program, schools receive a No Place For Hate banner that can be proudly displayed in the school. So, why No Place For Hate? No Place For Hate will help reduce bullying, name-calling, and other expressions of bias. It will create a safer learning environment, promote unity and pride, live by the core value and respect for others. And most importantly, No Place For Hate is a year-long bullying prevention program. Often times, in schools, we do allow bullying activities in October, go on bullying prevention month, and then that's it. So, No Place For Hate is sustained, proactive, and consistently reinforced throughout the school year. Other reasons for No Place For Hate? No Place For Hate needs the requirements of the Dignity for All Students Act, or the DASSA, by providing school-wide preventative activities. Now, we all know the side of DASSA where we have to do the reporting and investigation. This is the preventive side, the activities to prevent the reporting and the investigations. In twenty nineteen, DASSA was amended to include the ground map, which stands for creating respectful and open world to natural hair, but also prohibits racial discrimination based on the texture or detective hairstyles. ADL provides trainings and activity resources for students, educators, administrators, and the entire school community throughout the school year. So, the need, the impact, academic achievement, safety, and school discipline, workplace readiness in the global society, it's going to be teacher, student, and staff more around. So, how does No Place For Hate work? So, there's six easy steps. Now, we all know, when someone wants you to do something, they say six easy steps, and then you get the step that's not easy. So, there's six easy steps to become a No Place For Hate school. First, you have to register, which is easy. Form a committee of community stakeholders, pretty easy. Sign a pledge, pretty easy. Complete these to be approved, activities to submit all your paperwork, pretty challenging. And then you celebrate. So, it is six easy steps, we read it, but we lose, the challenging part of this is the implementation and the oversight, is where all the challenges lie. So, after all schools register, all students will sign a No Place For Hate pledge or promise to their elementary or secondary. You form a team, and that team consists of teachers, administrative staff, parents, and students, and community members. Some ideas for No Place For Hate, I'm gonna get into the slide, I'll just show you some sample activities that we've done. Stop Our Bullying Day, which we do on our floor. Dad Save Your Childs in School Day, Bullying Prevention Week. Now, we do a host of activities for Bullying Prevention Week. Mix It Up Day, where we have students mingle and mix with other students that they do not know during the lunch period. And my building is home to an autism cohort, we have a lot of students that go to those classes and meet them, and vice versa. Kindness Tree, Autism Awareness Wall, No Place For Hate Mirror. And on the secondary, you can do things like Instagram, website campaigns as well. Now, there's a criteria, you just can't do any activity and submit it. These activities have to be planned by students, focused on inclusivity, have active learning, address school-wide base issues, and done throughout the school year. So, for example, if you do all your No Place For Hate activities in a week, that doesn't constitute, it disqualifies. So, the hardest thing is picking those activities and having reinforced throughout the school year. year. So schools deem their No Place For Hate designation by building inclusive, safe communities, which respect is involved. The community is empowered to take a stand to get bullying by uniting and sending a clear unified message that all students have a place to belong. So here's an example of our No Place For Hate banner. And I didn't read one, so you can see it. We have six of them. So Rebecca Turner, we've been doing this for six years now. And as a result of that, combined with our PBIS and our strong academics, it has led to a 100% reduction in student suspensions. All of them, please note that our students also suspended four. So although we are paying for, for our K to six, our suspensions are going down. We went to K to five, our suspensions are going down. And it's because of this issue to write here combined with our PBIS and our academics as well. Yeah, so again, this is just a sample of the banner. When you walk into Rebecca Turner Elementary School, you'll see the five banners that we have, the No Place For Hate. And I do also want to say something about these banners. When you walk into main entrance, you see them. And I've had new parents that have come to our school, and the first thing they do is worry about bullying and what's going on with our school's safety. And I tell them our school is safe and we don't have a lot of issues. They say every school says that. So I'll take them outside, and you look in the H view, and they see these banners here, and they feel a lot at ease. Here's our school now having a No Place For Hate celebration in June, I believe this was 2016 or 2017. We went down to NYU, we participated in the celebration. Each of the board members currently have a brochure, their most recent brochure in your hand. And in 2017, 2018, Rebecca Turner Elementary School is featured on the cover of the brochure. So when you see us here in Chicago, in the noise area, you see our picture, you see my picture with a few students celebrating autism awareness month. So some of the program district's outcomes was No Place For Hate promotes a positive school climate, it increases student learning and acceptance and tolerance, it promotes diversity, it increases student attendance, and most importantly, in our district and our community, it decreases violence and bullying and reduces school suspensions. It aligns with the Mount Vernon City School District's policies of code of conduct and the strategic plans and commitments that are outlined in our school comprehensive education plans, and it also supports DASSA. No Place For Hate also can work in collaboration with our multi-tier systems of support, which includes PBIS, our Character Ed, our SEL, and our RTI programs, and its wellness as well. So very few schools, currently Rebecca Turner is the only school in Mount Vernon City School District, and I believe all Westchester participate in this. There are little to no for the last six years, there are little to no districts that are designated No Place For Hate. So while that can change, we can change the narrative. Let's take an aggressive response to the outcry addressing bullying issues and a proactive implementation of DASSA by making Mount Vernon City School District the first district in Westchester to be designated a No Place For Hate district. So some of the goals would be to enhance and create a climate of cultural respect, to celebrate diversity, to empower all members of the school community, to challenge all forms of intolerance. Now, here I have some sample goals. I have them later right now, so these are some sample goals. By 2023, 100% of our schools will participate in No Place For Hate activities. By 2023, 80% of our schools will be designated as a No Place For Hate school. And by 2024, 100% of all schools will be designated as No Place For Hate schools, which will make us the first No Place For Hate district in Westchester. So what would that look like? There has to be some sort of oversight. So this will, there will be a creation of a district No Place For Hate team that will work during the summer to plan benchmarks to get all schools ready for No Place For Hate. And this team will put together a detailed timeline, a two- to three-year implementation and support, and provide feedback to schools. The district team will then work closely with school teams to ensure the program is being implemented with fidelity. This is the oversight implementation that I was speaking to you about. Surveys, DASSA data, suspension data will be collected to determine the topics that were met. Areas in need of further support will be identified, and information will be shared with district leaders, and the district No Place For Hate team will work closely with the district administration. That district No Place For Hate team will also create a calendar. For example, they'll start working in the summer. August, present that to retreat. September, schools will pick their, choose their teams. We will launch this in October, during November, during Bullying Prevention Month, and follow up activities and follow up and give those schools support throughout the school year so we can be a No Place For Hate school. And just as a reminder, No Place For Hate is a proactive preventative measure. It does not replace the training required by the DASSA coordinators and the staff. So working together, you can build a community of respect and rapport and make Mount Vernon the first No Place For Hate district. I do want to give a special thank you to our No Place For Hate team at Rebecca Turner Elementary School, Ms. Curbin Hudson, Ms. Kristen Diaz, Ms. Jennifer Walder, Ms. Ansoda, and the whole Rebecca Turner Elementary School for making our school a No Place For Hate for the past six years.
Thank you, Dr. Doggett, and this concludes the superintendent's award. Do you think we have the energy to make remarks to the meeting until 10:00 tonight? Has he tried to ask you to record?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you need.
I said yes.
Okay.
So good night, everyone. So good night, everyone. Good evening. I'm dressed in orange because today we have probably had adults something for inside development. So I just wanted to make sure that we understand, comfortable, and united sense of honor when it comes to gun violence. Many individuals that came over here tonight as parents and attend to this and spoke about safety. And one of the things that revolves the safety is to make sure that there are certain laws that are in place. And when it comes to laws, legislations being put in place, you have to make sure that we are letting individuals who have a same understanding and revolves things such as universal firearm checks as well as the red flag law. Not sure if you know about the red flag law, the red flag law. It is not autonomy, but it gives school officials in particular, and so as family members, where there's someone who is willing to not be in the right state of mind, even though that they are in possession of guns, that those individuals can be reported to the police station. It's called a red flag law. So this is not important. I just want to thank Brother Muhammad and Dr. Rebecca Conroy for making sure that the Mandel School started their blog. We are really excited about that, it sends some pictures. Number two, Dr. Rebecca Conroy and I had a very conversation, four companies now, everyone was reading, everybody liked the only thing that's one thing. So everybody has one thing in life that's one thing, which is reading. And so now, we're going to start striking up, within the coming days, where students will go home with some reading books, because reading is a way to make it on top. The next thing is we are going to partner up with various organizations, the Nation Act, National Action Network. To make sure I have the right name, Moms of Action, Confederate Friends, as well as Brother. And Alphalor Tobacco Firearms. They will be with Mount Vernon City School District, as well as Mount Vernon Public Library on Thursday, June 16th, from 6:00 to 7:30. And that is about lung violence and safety awareness. Moms of Action will talk about safety. Us as parents, we send our children to spend a night at individuals' homes, and one of the questions that we do not ask is whether or not they have a firearm. We might ask if they work, and are impressed if they drive a Tesla, but we show them what they have, if they have a firearm. So Moms of Action make sure that they give you the tools and the meaning, the order to ask the difficult questions. This is for the parents in particular. National Action Network will be focused on the universal firearm checks that we're pushing for in the United States at the moment. The bullying crisis that we have here in Mount Vernon that resulted in one of our students being murdered. Dr. Rebecca Conroy and I had long conversations with the cheerleading teams. We sat for hours. It was both, if you listen to that, because one of the things that adults like to do is they'd like to say that, I was a teenager before, he was a teenager before, but he wasn't a teenager in 2022. I was a teenager with Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, or anything under the above. So I don't understand their culture. So in order for me to understand their culture, in order for us to understand their culture, to understand what it means, we have to sit down and we need them to talk to us. And so that's what took place. We both cheerleading teams talking to both myself and Dr. Conroy, as well as their parents. Society has this false narrative where something happens and then the next day is business as usual, it's not business as usual. In the meantime, we have a great, at Mount Vernon Public Library, we give books that will be given out to parents, and there are read alouds and chapter books that are about the crisis that our children are, that they're going through right now, such as death and mass shootings and negative damage. Last of my things, I had the privilege of hanging out with some really powerful students from Mount Vernon City School District during the Mount Vernon Memorial Day parade. The majority of the children who did their work from Mount Vernon City School District. They were very powerful, they were very interesting, they showed that they were seen, and they were seen in the light, but they were just really hungry to be a part of the parade. Just want to give a special shout out to the Girl Scouts and the Daisies and the Brownies, because they definitely represent that is my core thing.
Just to brief from work, the communications and web committees that event twice in the past week. We are on track to launch the website August 10th to go live with the new website. We are doing all the stuff behind the scenes that we need to be ready for that. The top of the students in the high school didn't complete the first round of photographs to wait for those to be transmitted to us so we can evaluate them and start populating the website with those photographs. And I think the main thing is we are, we have a meeting next week, which will include some of the groups that we go to activate in terms of promoting the utilization of the website and all going to be initiated in the district. The parent liaisons, the PCA's, the National Honor Society, you know, any student leadership groups, et cetera, and obviously building leaders. So that we can make this a successful launch and transition to a more digital communications platform. We will be having a boot camp for certain of these constituent groups August 3rd or the 5th, where we will be, you know, taking everyone through, and also the tech links, taking them through how to use the website. We're doing a procedure manual on whole operation philosophical procedures, which we will share and we will draft for by the end of this one, by the end of June.
Good evening, Mount Vernon. Special faculty, Academy, and we are with Dr. Smith. And we discuss several things that people have brought to my attention. For example, ID reviews, the certain ID reviews, and some people saying that we had X amount of vacancies the entire year for special education. And I already included this meeting that was basically, what's the word? Basically, we don't have right now vacancies, if I'm not mistaken, and that's the right way?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
We have less than ten teachers in the district.
Okay, we have less than ten teachers in the district.
We have less than ten teachers in the district.
Okay, we have less than ten teachers in the district. This is, that's not, okay, so now it's not, this, the last meeting, it depends on if we're going to have any vacancies. Okay, we're going to have any vacancies that we will fill up, so I'm sorry. So now, for Rebecca Turner, we have less than ten vacancies. We do not have more than 20, or we don't have 20, we have less than ten vacancies. The other thing is that we're discussing about ID's and also how our students will have the ID's that we gave, you know, by January, so we discussed our summer. We also discussed, so can I, we also discussed, please forgive me. I'm getting this listening glasses, I can't see anything. So that's one of the main things that we're discussing. But we're going to have a meeting on the 15th, and we're going to go into that now, and we're going to find out what is that we need to do to close the new, the school year and move forward to the summer. And during the summer, we'll have a meeting to find out what can we do for, what do we need to do for September. And the other thing is, Mount Vernon, guys, thank you, Dr. B C, about that. We, I just want to invite everyone, because we will have to have used some of those books since all of our students are going to get it. And the Dr. B C's team of parent liaison, they might be discussing, and we will have a read aloud minutes, you know, 30 minutes, 45 minutes for the special education students with those books, and have guests, readers, and it could be Dr. B C, our president, it could be... And it could be Dr. DC, our president, it could be, um, our wonderful, wonderful PJ, loves to read to children. And it would be a wonderful thing to have something for special education kids as well. To, you know, to learn a way which we could discuss and address their needs. And last is our July intervention program. Um, the proposal is done and we will be having a sit down with our superintendent. And she is amazing because she is looking for the funds for us to have it cost free to the parents. And we would like to start it if I'm not mistaken, Dr. DC in July, right? Yeah, so first week of July, hopefully we will have our, um, athletics program for our special education. It's been hard work. But we are very proud of everything, so, um, we are on, and I'm sorry I said last week, but I did forget to mention that we have our next session of parent workshops, um, that is being sponsored by the Special Education Committee as well as the CEP, the Special Educational Advisory Council. It will take place June 15th, um, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 via Zoom and it's, we will target health awareness. Um, also, we're not leaving, hopefully we'll be discussing the topics that we discovered during the summer. And so we want to put at least one topic to work with our parents. And hopefully, you know, we want to get everybody here, Dr. Smith, hopefully it could be transition. So we could talk about transition of our older students that aren't special education. And I am done with the special education and the work.
Okay, uh, I've been in contact consistently with, uh, our Dr. Wyatt, Eo Red, Mandela. I want to shout you out and Ms. Hopkins for holding down that crossing guard situation in the mornings and afternoons, you called for timeout to make sure our babies can cross the street safely, so God bless, appreciate you after that. Um, I know that we're at a place where the crossing guard situation is about to be resolved. Yes, so, um, again, I'm just shouting to you out for that. Thank you very much. Really quick, the renaming ceremonies for homes in Columbus is coming in the next week or so, so you should see communications come out for that. Um, and I've also been in discussions constantly with, uh, Mr. Silver regarding some proposals for a pair of the, the return of traps, a lot of things, a lot of things underway. Playground initiative, things like that. Um, and I want to make sure that it's understood that we're not just appearing playgrounds because, oh, if a player playgrounds, the playgrounds were assessed and surveyed and we received specific wording which playgrounds have to be shut down because they are an actual hazard. Okay, so before anybody asks that question, why would we fix the playgrounds that you complain about? Um, another thing, I want to say that I, I was at the Marlin Parade, uh, here in Mount Vernon and it was really good to see the schools that did, that do have bands. And I would say this, I was, it was so crazy to hear that there's no school bands really in Mount Vernon City School District at all. And I remember the days when I would come out for the parade and there was a band for every school, the girls around with the trolleys were out with the batons and white boots and it was amazing. But what I saw more, there was a call back to that energy and I just wanted to say that it was amazing. The same drum line from, um, homeschool, former homeschool, the Honor Academy, they were there leading that parade and Sticks and Stones was amazing. Uh, I just happen to come from a, my, my, yes, my son is in Sticks and Stones, so I'm just plugging that, right? Anyhow, I just came from their school just now. They have a little form, listen, the things that are going in the industry as far as trying to bring back that joy that we got from going to those parades back in the eighties and nineties. Trying to see it come back, so I was very happy to see that so well. Got to see you got a tree out there. Um, I think that's all I have right now and more to go.
Just one thing, I want to remind your trustees that we have, uh, we have approved the trees being planted at the return of, and there was a question as, as to if we would maintain that. So can I get a consensus from your trustees that you're gonna maintain those trees?
I'm sorry, they told us they remain, the city.
They're not, they asked to override it, so.
But that's not, that was clear, I'm sorry, but just to be clear, that was.
I can't hear you.
That was the exact wording that we used when we agreed to allow trees to be there. Their representative said that their arborist, I think that's the title of mine, was going to maintain those trees at their responsibility or whatever.
She made her say, so my, my question is, if you go to, if you're gonna approve, you have to plant the trees and you maintain?
I'd like to say something to that. No, I gotta say something. It's not actually a yes or no before we have to, the question still remains that if we made the decision to approve the trees planted based on the act, the understanding. If you can't, she makes a mistake that, that, when I make, when you make a mistake, usually you still have to, if you play Uno, you make a mistake, you take two, three, mistake. What mistake is, are they taking, they have to take responsibility for the mistake. We have our builders and brown spokes who handle the, the landscape and things like that are not necessarily trained to maintain these trees. And going to outside to contractors and, and, and things like that to get, to outsource the work, but we have people here. But that should not even be an option because they clearly said they were going to maintain the tree. So why are we taking this back and forth with them until they, I mean, we can look at the recording from the day that she sat in front of us and said they were gonna maintain. So why are we looking at it as a yes or no rather than, well, no, let's stick to what she said? A lot of people are saying that we want to stick to the words that they said. Why would we not have them stick to the words that we, that they said?
Well, I don't think she's a city of knowledge, you know, if she can't maintain the trees, she has to be a leader.
So she's asking?
So my question is to the board, uh, we want to approve the trees. They have some trees there already planted, I think they're a little nice. Uh, um, Mr. Dog, those trees look nice over at the return of.
The, the, it's not, it's not the fact that the trees look nice. It is not the fact that the trees there, it's just making sure that they're able to maintain the trees, right? Whatever maintenance is needed for the trees, so that we won't come back and be the definition of insanity a year later or two years later when there's new trustees here. Where they have to be battling about the trees. And so I understand that you want a yes or no, but to be yes or no, what is the, the formality and the understanding of us making sure each trees, I take care of the property while they are sitting there.
We have trees, we have other trees we wish to maintain, um, by access, am I right, Mr. Silver? So, you know, does it give power to maintain?
I would like to see, um, Governor President and I, all due respect, I'd like to see a resolution on this and see what the annual cost is gonna be because it's something we agreed to based on the fact that the city made a commitment to maintain the trees for us. Therefore, the only way I can respond to this is through a formal resolution.
But she was, she doesn't enjoy the misery.
The Arbor Association believes the city will not maintain the trees because they are the property, I'm pretty sure about that. So I mean, the safety of the city, the Arbor School, the city trees, they will not, the city is not maintaining.
So you're getting the resolution, so with the Arbor saying that they did, okay, so, we want to change the, the, we want to change the, right? And it's a yes that we want to change this, however, however, just want to make sure that we do this the right way. Because we know that the Arbor, I, I have a house in Auburn and the Arbor will come after me if I do something wrong to the trees. So we're gonna take care of the trees and like, like trustee, uh, said, put in a resolution and we'll take care of the trees and we'll be all right. The next time they're gonna come to the trees.
You want to maintain the trees?
Yeah, but the next time the Arbor comes, plant trees all over the place, never know.
Just mentioned our students, they have more trees than I have.
You know, we're not.
And have this conversation again. But I believe it should be a resolution, and we're saying what the cost is, and you have to talk in front of us before you can give the green light.
Thank you.
Shepherd told the Department of Organistic's money, and Shepherd's over the taxpayers' money. We should not just say yes to give the green light to them and we're gonna take on the cost and not know what that cost is.
So this is first, and we have to do the obvious again, for, for consideration. Okay, can we sit down here? It's definitely here. Not all right, President, so.
She said that I was gonna be out, um, to determine what the cost, that cost would be. Have you talked about it?
Maybe we should just make a resolution, what's the problem?
Well, we don't know what the cost is.
Yeah, when we do go, we do a resolution?
All right, so that's, that's that, we have to define the, we will be serving for, uh, we named the ceremony for Mount Vernon School, so we have to give a date for that. Do you have any, you have dates that you want to share with us, Governor?
Uh, if our district clerk.
You turn that on.
If our district clerk can share the dates again, so I don't get it wrong.
So originally, I think I have a chance to be to, uh, sorry, Honor Academy will be on June 14th. They have a school for the 14th, that's the date they originally knew it was at. But the 14th works better for that school community, um, and for Leadership Academy, it's June 23rd.
Also, what do you guys think of yours, like that?
Yeah. At what time? At the graduation? No, not for the names. On the 23rd, that's not yet.
Do we have times for these events?
So the 14th is between nine and 21:00. We have a, uh, we have a, uh, five, two, three, four, five, two, three, four, five. There are five graduation conditions on the twenty-third, so we have the term.
So that's pretty important, for getting to post. Okay, you can all, you can all, it's nice to see. Just a reminder to all, uh, just a reminder to all our community members that we do have swimming lessons taking place at Mount Vernon Pool, Mount Vernon High School. So please take your children and look at the website to find out where we have open water. It is very important that our children learn how to swim, take them to the pool, enjoy the pool, over those hot days. And also remember we have a lifeguard, uh, sessions in the swim club in Mount Vernon High School, so please go and enjoy.
Okay, so we have the right to...
I just want, um, the community to know that, uh, I had a meeting on, uh, in, in respect to the trustees and the city of Mount Vernon. Had a really nice meeting with the postmaster here in Mount Vernon about mailing. Um, there was an, an issue with the last set of mailing that went out from out of the city school district where a plethora of individuals never received the mailing. Uh, there was a second mailing, and that, and that cost around fifty thousand dollars. And so had a very nice conversation with the postmaster. If you have an issue with your mail, instead of posting it on Facebook, can you go to the postmaster and talk to her, she'll be willing to talk to you. Um, we, we, the, the only way that this works is if we have conversations. And so the next mailing will be going out within the reasonable timeframe because we're having a medical budget. And that will be on Tuesday, the twentieth of June, and I was thinking twenty-first, sorry, the twenty-first. And so please, uh, make sure, uh, parents and, uh, citizens, just make sure that you are receiving your mailing. In the first, if you're not receiving your mailing, um, if it leaves out the chair time, make sure that you walk present to vote because you're voting class. Thank you.
Can I please have a motion and second to approve, given resources number six point one, establish a position of diversity and equity and include coordinator?
Motion, second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. And I please have a motion and second to approve, given resources at number six point two to a vouch title that we need to maintain.
Motion, second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the establishment of a position of assistant superintendent for administration, planning, and culture?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And I please have a motion and second to approve human resources memorandum, A certified and C.C.D. not certified dated June seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion, second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries. And I please have a motion and second to approve our web trainer to travel to the local stadium to participate in the NATA convention.
Motion, second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Sorry, it's the same trial that we discussed in the last meeting, where the issue of the outside force and that, I'm sorry, I'm just, that was resolved, we don't have a moment. We have the prices come down in the last, oh, keep the trend, go ahead.
Any further questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and second to approve general fund transfer for the twenty-one, twenty-two year, uh, June seventh, two thousand twenty-two?
Motion.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and second to establish a district insurance program for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year?
Motion.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I just have a question from Mr. Silver, was this, was this in the range of what we said in terms of things?
We, we, we had the insurance committee, and you participated. Uh, we spoke to, uh, anticipated costs, which were within the budget, and these final costs are still within the budget.
Okay, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and second to approve school improvement personnel memorandum, the twenty-two dash eighteen dated June seventh, two thousand twenty-two?
Motion, second.
Any comments or concerns? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and second to approve student service memorandum of the twenty-one dated June seventh, two thousand twenty-two?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and second to authorize a settlement agreement in general release with employee number three seventy-eight?
Motion.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and second to authorize an employment agreement with Dr. Jamal Doggett as assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction?
Motion, second.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank the board for passing the resolution, and I want to give, um, Dr. D.C. a special thank you for having the confidence to take this leadership position in this holiday while we do this. And tell a quick story about Dr. D.C. Um, ten years ago, um, driving, I had a car, driving home, I had to move it down, blasting music. I get a call from Dr. D.C., and she says, "I need you to take over Longfellow Elementary School as the acting principal for the next few months." And I said, the dumb question, she said, "I kind of want you, don't let me down." Clearly, she wanted to hold me. Couple months later, she says, "The opportunity that we're coming up for you at, um, Longfellow Elementary School back then." And she said, "I want to recommend you to be the head of that principal job as a principal, don't let me down." Ten years later, here we are. Um, she's appointed me as assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction, and she didn't get the chance to hang her hope me, but I will not let you down again. So thank you to Dr. D.C. for everything that's... Hi, everyone, I want to thank the colleagues at Rebecca Turner Elementary School Community for allowing me to be a leader over the past ten years. Got to thank my parents, I got to thank God for everything that has given me to empower my community and lead this community. Um, the vision I had for the CNI department is instructional efficiency. This will be achieved through collaboration, David Jimmy decision-making, streamlining initiatives, and implementing systems of support with best practices to ensure that the structural programs are cohesive and re-inforce the most important learning in all academic areas. This laser-focused approach will lead to improved student outcomes. I look forward to working with all stakeholders in this group leadership position while I'm able to better serve my community, my home, my area, my world.
Can I please have a motion and second to authorize an employment agreement with Serena Collins as executive assistant superintendent? Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and second to accept the minutes of the May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two special meeting?
Motion. Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and second to accept the minutes of the May twentieth, February, two thousand twenty-two special meeting?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and second to enter into executive session to discuss the employment history of particular personal persons? I need a second?
Second.
I don't know.
All in favor?
Aye.